Ready to start. The flag is at the back of the room tonight, so if you would join me for a moment of silent meditation and then the pledge. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, Miss Davis. Here, Mr. Kazer.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Perkins, here. Mr. Walter.
Here.
And Mr. Lafayette will be a little bit late, but he will be in. All right, council, received minutes from the June 9th meeting. Any comments or a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Ms. Davis abstaining. Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins abstaining. Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right, who asked to receive current expenses? Any questions?
Motion to approve the expenses as submitted.
Second. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Kazer.
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right, before we get into reports, we have a presentation this evening, and I wanted to allow Chief Kidd to come forward and do that at the outset of our meeting. So, if you want to come up.
Thank you, Mary Douglas. As several of you may or may not have known, the morning of the 6th of June, we had an apartment fire at the Pleasant Valley Colonies, specifically 351 Stener Court. While that is not, I guess necessarily, abnormal for us to have a fire, we are the fire department, some of the actions of some of the Plain City employees went above and beyond what I would call the normal call of duty. Specifically, Officers Prather and Howard were on duty that evening. At approximately 3:10, we received a phone call of an apartment on fire at that address. It's a five-unit apartment building, so it's a rather large structure. They were there within, I believe, two minutes of the time of call. Officer Howard was pulling up, Officer Prather was seconds behind him. They found fire coming from the backside of the building, heavy smoke conditions, and reports that there were still folks in the building. Without regard for their own personal safety, they started evacuating the residents in those five units. I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eleanor, it's Betty Bridgeway was the original caller from across the street. We're actually going to be recognizing Betty at a later date, I believe it's the 8th of July, they're having a potluck. We wanted to do something similar to this, we wanted to be in their house. That way, the neighbors and folks that live there in Pleasant Valley Colonies can actually get to see, you know, the appreciation we have for the residents and for what they've done. But back to the fact at hand, there were four people still in the apartments when the officers started evacuating the residences. They were able to actually walk two people out, the third person met them at the door, the fourth person didn't even answer the door. Fortunately, we have a key system built into all of our businesses here in Plain City that allow the police and fire access to those buildings. They made access to the gentleman's apartment, he was still sound asleep. Now, I've been doing this for over 20 years, and I've, you know, worked in some of the busiest companies in the city of Columbus, and the conditions were deteriorating rapidly. There was heavy black smoke, there was a significant amount of fire. Plain and simple, I had already committed resources from the fire department, and Lieutenant Scheider was the officer in charge, I think several of the guys were here from that evening. Actually said, hey, split your crew, I need two guys to the front with me, because I was betting every dollar in my pocket that they were going to have to make entry using our self-contained breathing apparatus, because the smoke conditions were bad enough. I was surprised that they were able to make entry into the apartment. They woke the gentleman up, got him out of bed, helped him to his scooter, he actually got out of the building with the assistance of the officers. At that point, they started accounting for everybody that was kind of milling around as far as the folks there at the apartment complex. And I took some Cliff Notes, if you will, so that I didn't mess this up. They were there in two minutes of the call, we were there within five minutes. It takes us a couple of minutes to get ourselves out the door and moving. Within eight minutes of the time that they arrived, we were able to give what we call an all-clear on the structure. What that means is we had everybody accounted for. Eight minutes. Unbelievable timeframe. You know, when I read that number, it said, you know what, something was different about this incident than normal. And it all comes down to this, the day before, the city of London had a similar fire, similar setup, similar units, the whole nine yards. They had a tragic loss of life that night. I truly believe that we would have had a similar outcome had it not been for the actions of both of these officers. With that said, now these are identical, I just happened to grab Theron's first. I'd like Officer Prather and Howard to come forward, we'll go here to the middle. But we've actually made up, the highest award we can actually give within the fire department is the Fire Chief's commendation, and both gentlemen are going to be receiving that this evening. You want to go, where we want to go, guys, so we've got a good, where's going to be best for your picture?
Why don't you go here in front, I can back up a little bit. I'll try to stay out of your way.
All right, I'll go with Theron first.
All right, I'll come back here.
On behalf of the Pleasant Valley Joint Fire District, I'd like to award you the Fire Chief's commendation.
Thank you, sir.
You've got to take that off, it doesn't make you, I mean, I know, I'd be a lot better looking without that. Aaron. Again, on behalf of the Pleasant Valley Joint Fire District, thank you for what you've done for us.
Thank you.
I'd like a photo with both of them.
I would like a photo with both of them. Sergeant, would you like to stand up? Sergeant Jaskowitz is representing Chief Hill this evening, I believe Chief Hill's on vacation. I spoke at length with Chief Hill, and, you know, too many times we hear about all the bad things, or hey, there's this problem or that problem, and, you know, we don't hear about the positive things that happen within our community enough. And can't say enough about what these guys did for the residents, you know, for us. I mean, it made our job that much easier by them taking care of our first problem. You know, you can read any firefighting manual, it says, there are three priorities when you pull up at a fire. Life safety, insulation stabilization, property conservation. What that means is we take care of the people first, first and foremost, we want to take care of people, we can't replace them. Second, we take care of making sure that it doesn't get any worse, you know. The easy way to say it is, put the fire out. You put the fire out, the problem goes away. And third is property conservation, that's when we make sure that we put tarps, you know, the guys were going back into the apartments, making sure that we found valuables, making sure that we found pictures, you know, all those things that are, it's important to us. It's stuff, but it's important to us, you know, that's the third thing that we do. They took care of number one. You take care of our first priority, it now allows us to focus on putting that fire out, you know. So it now gave Lieutenant Scheider another option, in fact, it put another fire hose into play. And that's the easiest way to say it, it allowed his crew to pull a second line off our fire truck. And the fire goes out faster the more water you can put on. Yeah, so these guys made the difference. And like I said, I've talked with Chief Hill, he actually sent Sergeant Jaskowitz tonight to represent him. So if we can get both of you two in between Sergeant and I, we appreciate that, and we'll have her snap a couple more pictures, and then I'll let you get back to the, side down.
That's her mugshot compared to mine.
Again, thank you for your time. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Chief Wood, you said that very well.
Thank you again for allowing me a few minutes of your meeting, I do certainly appreciate that.
Yes, I emailed both officers immediately after finding out, and they know my appreciation and certainly proud of them and our police force, so, yes.
Sandy, I don't know your protocol, but can I say one thing?
Sure.
Sure. As President of the Pleasant Senior Centers Board of Trustees, I also would like to thank both of you, and Chief Kidd, Lieutenant Scheider, for your work and what you really accomplished. And yes, we are very thankful and very blessed in that nobody was hurt, either the residents or any of the first responders. So again, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks to the fire department. All right. I know some of you don't live in town and indicated that, so you're more than welcome to go ahead and leave if you'd like. All right, so moving forward with our agenda. Renee, do you have anything?
I don't know.
All right. And Sergeant Jaskowitz is here listening for Chief Wood, he's on vacation, so could you have a report?
The only thing that we had to report was just the success of a previously reported training that we held here at the fire department, the craze training. It was pretty successful, we had about 30 people, we've had a lot of people express interest since then, hoping that we put on another course, which we do hope to do and plan to do later this year.
Great, thank you. Any questions? All right, and then starting.
Just to let you know, we do have a pre-con meeting for the water tower clean and paint project, it is this Friday. I know there was some discussion amongst your group about the color and what's going to be on that tank. Looking for some direction of what you want to do there, we don't really have to decide tonight, but be thinking about it, and I'll get a little bit more idea of what our choices are on Friday, but that has to be done, that decision has to be pretty quick.
I throw out the idea of perhaps soliciting advertisement, especially for the Dutchman, if we can get, I don't know, several thousands, tens of thousands of dollars a year in advertising, seems like a good idea, you know, I didn't get much of a reception with that, but I like the idea, and it's not as if Pleasant City isn't already synonymous with the Dutchman in any way, of bargaining legal issues. I think it's a good way to make additional revenue with religion, no cost, absent the cost of putting up whatever they put on the house.
And I think the website is a good suggestion for it as well, I don't know why, did?
Yes, I like it. We've got two water towers.
We just. Then you can buzzers. That has to go before you can paint, or something.
Or we could paint them in place, I don't know. Any other thoughts there, anyone else?
There's no legal issue. No, it's no different than if you're erecting a cell tower and attaching it to a city or building structure.
So, let me ask then, is anyone opposed to that?
It would certainly be long-term advertising, because it's not going to get painted for many years, so, yeah, it'd be a lot of caution.
And maybe that's part of any agreement, that they maintain their, whatever they put on there, that's their responsibility. We can, if, knowing that you're okay with that, we can research it.
Yeah, we have time, that'll be the last thing done, obviously we've got a couple of tanks to get cleaned up first. The more pressing question is the color, do we want to keep the color of the towers the same, do we want to change?
I think the white-blue is, it blends a lot better with the sky than a sharp color, so.
Is there some functional reason why white-blue? In other words, you don't want to keep the water as much, whereas a darker color would heat the water inside, I mean, is that an issue?
I always thought it was so it wouldn't, you know, stand out so much. I could be wrong, but most of the towers are a pretty benign color, so.
Unless you're trying to get attention.
Yeah.
With advertisement, you might manage.
I think towers, like the one that Jefferson painted to look like a golf ball, or a peach, I suppose.
Can you maybe find out what colors are available?
Sure.
Like, I'm assuming it's a specific paint that they use for those, so they probably only have a limited amount of colors, and maybe we could discuss it at our working session? Or that's soon enough.
We can bring up something like, you know, that across it to match our website, I mean, I think our website background here is blank. I mean, I don't know, it might help if we determine what we're going to put on, or we determine the background color.
The advertising idea, I don't know that we can limit that just to one merchant in town, we'd probably have to, it'll do it all a fair, of course, the price might limit a lot, businesses, yeah, you're right.
Okay, after our meeting Friday, then I'll get some additional information out to you.
Do we still have the buzzer problem?
Yeah, they're down there.
Can we do anything about that?
Not from the scope of this project.
Take the railing off or anything?
I don't know, Chuck.
I'm sure they could push any out on the top or somewhere.
Somewhere.
Cause crosses of the legs.
You could electrify it.
All right, anything else?
Yep. Mosquito fogging will begin this Wednesday, we'll be fogging from 8:30 to 11:30. The alternate date for spraying will be the following evening, Thursdays, for the same times, we'll no longer be spraying in the mornings as an alternate fogging schedule. Also, our Public Utilities Clerk attended a utility billing software training conference about two weeks ago, and came back with some really good information from that. We also received restitution for the fuel thefts that had occurred. And speaking of utility billing, we have a new online payment gateway, and it is up and running. The new web portal gives our customers access to their own water and sewer bills with real-time viewing of their account, including account history and many more options, they can edit their personal information, as well as make payments and recurring payments if they choose immediately online with real-time. And unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Sergeant Lafayette?
Couple issues from the last meeting, I did corresponded to Mr. Frick with the PCABA regarding the parade issue, and with regard to the speed limits within the park, telling him that we need to make sure that our coaches are aware of, first of all, keeping the speed limits during the baseball season down and staying within the speed limits, and also advising the police are present throughout the park, and if somebody's speeding, they have every right to get ticketed for that. And also with regard to the candy for the parades, obviously we don't have another parade this year, but in advance of the next parade, we need to have a sit-down with the coaches and have a clear understanding of supervision of the players on the parade floats, and that we want to, we'd like to maintain the parades as we've had them, but we need to do it safely and with respect, and that's pretty much it for that issue. I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Kazer asked me to do some more attention to the role of social media as far as sunshine law in advance of the July work session. This is a developing area of the law, there isn't anything really specific, the only issues that arise are if a person's acting in their official capacity versus their individual capacity, and the law is kind of, you know, we have generalized laws as to forum discussions with council members, obviously if you're discussing a public issue and deliberating and voting on a public issue, that is not something to be done outside of a public meeting, that's been done in the meeting only. So there has to be some caution, I understand, you know, all the various social networks and tweeting and all that stuff, that it's treated no different than any kind of serial phone calls or serial emails, where if you're, you can't round robin a vote, you can't round robin a discussion on something. That being said, you also are not inhibiting the ability of council to bring something to the rest of council's attention via social media or by email. If somebody says, you know, hey, I got a great idea for the water tower, here's what it is, you know, if we're painting the water tower, feel free to circulate it, we're not deliberating that, we're not discussing it outside of a public meeting, and we're not making a decision on it, so long as that then comes up in discussion for deliberation later. So generally speaking, the real issue comes down to is whether it is a truly private discussion on a forum, or is it a public discussion in the context of what that person's official capacity is. And under those circumstances, that's always fact-based and will be determined by the court if we ever got to that, but hopefully everybody is mindful of the general requirements that whatever we do here as a public body must be done in public, any voting deliberations, all that has to be taken, take place right here in this meeting in front of the public. The other issue I have is the ordinance for the unauthorized use of village property, which I'll pass around here in a second. And the final issue that was brought up at the last meeting and dealt with the sale of the, of that zero-turn mower, I think there was a discussion on that, and there was a request for me to determine whether or not the village has the authority to donate property. There's kind of two parts to my answer on this, the first part is, there's nothing in statute that authorizes the village to sell, or I should say, to donate property to anyone. The statute is very clear that the, I think it's 715.01, the revised code specifically provides that the village can buy, sell, or lease property, including personal property. It does not say buy, sell, lease, or donate, you know, within the following provisions. There's nothing in the Ohio Revised Code, there's nothing in the state, matter of fact, there's case law on it, but I think the most recent case on it was back in 1965, and it appears to be still a good law, that said that there is nothing that authorizes, that there is no authority to donate public property. And my belief and my understanding of this is, because technically, every piece of property that is owned by the village is owned by the people of the village, we all, you know, every taxpayer has a stake in that, and so for the council to sit there and parse out what they're, you know, what they want to give away and to whom they want to give it away, it's fraught with problems if you do that. So my first answer is, no, we can't do it, we can't donate it. The second issue is, in going through the facts again with Chief Hill, and discussing it with him in detail as far as the timing and everything, it, clearly, the insurance company was aware of the theft of this mower, the claim was submitted, the claim was paid. At that point, pursuant to the terms of the insurance contract, it became the property of the insurance company. Now, we are, as a public entity, free to accept and keep things that are donated to us, and that's really what the insurance company did, they basically told us to keep the mower, they didn't want to go through the expense of collecting it and then trying to sell it or do whatever, so they left it with us. So at that point, that became public property, that became the property of the village, and again, we can't do anything with it. So once that insurance claim was paid off in full, there is nothing further that could be done. So, that's all I have to say about that. Otherwise, I think that's all I had to record.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
Didn't we last time amend the resolution to take the mower out?
Right.
So then, can we re-admend it to put the mower back in, or reasoning to a resolution to sell it?
We voted on, that was, was that the second reading?
Mm-hmm.
I think if we're going to do that, we would have to make this the second reading again, do a re-over, because we voted with it at the first reading with it included, and we passed it. We'd have to do this again as a second reading, a new second reading including it back in. So it'd have to be a motion to do that, and then, and then vote.
Great. That will come up here in a few minutes in our business. Okay, is there anyone here, I don't see John Rucker here, anyone that wants to report that call?
Okay.
Planning and zoning, please.
Yes, we met on Wednesday, and previously, Agape had come, and we had said that we couldn't do the changes they needed because of the EPA. They did reach out to the EPA, the EPA has actually approved it, and so they can go forward, however, then we found that it was like four and a half feet over the amount, so we gave them the option to either make it smaller, to fit within the compounds of the ordinance, or to take it to DCA, so, and I don't know if he was going to take it to DCA, if he's contacted them.
He is wanting to take it to DCA.
Okay. Or variance, so, just coming your way. And then, I believe at the last council meeting, I know I was out, but I believe the wind energy, the sandwich boards, and the V3 changes were distributed.
They went by email, right?
Yeah, they were meant to be by email before that meeting, I don't think we discussed them, but I think they went out there.
Do you want to discuss them now, or do you want to wait till?
Sure, thank you.
So I will tell you, I'm not real familiar with the wind energy, I came in at the end of that, when you guys had made most of the approvals and changes to that. It did, we did use what, I believe Marysville had had previously, the alternative energy. Was there specific questions on that?
The, again, the proposed, or at least for the purposes of discussion, and what was agreed to by P&amp;D, was the same ordinance that Marysville uses, obviously, that is going to be edited to make the appropriate changes, but otherwise, the remainder of it is intact, there aren't any substantive changes to be made.
We spoke last time about the fall radius, is, what are the requirements there? In other words, I'm assuming if it's, let's say, 50 feet tall, that there needs to be a fall radius in excess of 50 feet, the diameter, or the radius on each side needs to be 50 feet.
And actually, if you look within here, it's 1.1 times the total height, so if you're dealing with 100-foot, and I don't even think, matter of fact, if I recall correctly, it doesn't even permit anything that high.
No, just to add an example.
Right, so it'd have to be 110-foot fall radius.
And is that codified, is that Ohio law, or is that just something Marysville has created?
Right, there's no state statute on that.
Is there a restriction for electromagnetic interference?
I don't remember if there was or was not, I don't believe that there is.
I think we need to look at that.
Okay.
Regenerating energy and electromagnetic interference could cause problems for neighbors. Actually, it could cause problems for police communications, dark communications.
And I believe that these are all, we have a limitation on the size, and these are all small, small wind energy apparatus.
Does anybody here know anything about such a device? I mean, is electric energy actually generated within the tower, is it generated somehow underground, does it go somewhere, I mean, how does that work?
They use it onsite, I believe it's only for onsite, for your own property.
So it's meaning to generate there, and just given locally?
Right, you're not establishing a utility for other people to be using off of yours, it's only for your own property. And it's, the limit is between 2 kilowatts and 5 megawatts. So that may, that may very well have some bearing, and I'll look into it on that electromagnetic interference, having a lower wattage. Again, this is not like your typical wind farm that you would see as you head out towards, you know, Van Ward or something like that, where you have great giant fields of them, because frankly, with the fall radius, you're not going to fit anything in this village if that's that tall. I mean, those are as tall as our water tower, and we don't have room for another water tower, so. But yeah, I'll take a look at the electromagnetic interference, and if you guys want, you can look at this again, and if you have other questions, you can email us to me.
Well, on page 3 of 9, it does say signal interference. The owner of a small wind energy project must take reasonable steps to prevent and eliminate inner interference with transmission and reception of electromagnetic communications such as microwave radios, telephones.
Oh, the original, okay.
Yeah, so it does have something in there. And then it goes on down about wiring electrical apparatus.
Right. Right. So I can take a look at that and I'll circulate and email to all of you, kind of defining that some more if you want to discuss it some more at the next meeting, we can do that.
And then, V three changes were regarding the changes in the, not allowing residential on the main floor in V three district. If you guys have any questions on that, I know we had talked about that previously. Are we okay to approve that then?
We can. We'll pass those out in a minute.
Everybody should already have.
Yeah. Great. Okay. So go ahead with the third one.
And then the third one was the sandwich board signs. We had made some changes to the ordinance.
Corner properties.
Corner properties, allowing a second sign for corner properties.
And the up to? Okay. Email's clear. That was it?
Now, these would be, would we draft a ordinance or a resolution running out forward?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I think as it is now, each of those would be amendments to existing ordinances. Like wind energy would be a brand new ordinance that we'd have to shoehorn in there somewhere in our ordinances. These two would be amendments to what we already have. What you have is the draft of what it would look like. I think I did it with a marked up version so you could see the highlighted and the stricken language. But yeah, then, so you consider that, if you agree to that, then I will go back and put a final version together and then do a resolution to approve that particular ordinance change.
So if you're okay with any of those, would you take a motion to move forward with? So all can draft an ordinance?
Need a motion for all three?
No, we're going to hold off on the wind, so if you want, if you're okay with the other two.
A motion to move forward to amending the V three district and the side.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, BCA. I don't think we have a BCA, do you?
Well, one was planned for July tenth, but Mr. Lafayette cannot attend, so I have not heard anything.
Is scheduling?
Yeah, we're working on it. We have a time, it's on the first one.
We're within it right now, but it's going to be close by the time you get back.
Thirty day, we've got a thirty day timeframe to get that in, so.
Okay. Well, if we need to do it sooner, we can do that as well. Okay. They just can be calling another day.
Okay, I'm thinking on CIC.
Attended a Union County CIC meeting two weeks ago. Really, nothing major to report. And we have a Madison County CIC meeting tomorrow night, six o'clock. David?
Yep.
Six o'clock.
Okay, President Portem and Parks, please.
Nothing for President Portem. For Park, we have set a meeting for July twenty-third at six p.m. Council chambers, so getting agenda items for that, so if you have anything, our items is discussion of possibly ball diving at the park. Know if you have things you'd like us to talk about, July twenty-third.
I got a question. What are they going to do about restrooms that we tore down for the, for the steam pressures?
I was just looking, asking what we were planning on doing with the restrooms. We have lots of activities out there. I mean, we have the steam pressures coming up with Fourth of July and we've basically taken out sixty.
Unusable bathrooms.
Unusable bathrooms that we don't have now.
Yeah, well, they are usable before, so really, no different situation than we were, but that's a great question. Now, I guess we have the youth building. What are our options?
There is restrooms at the youth building, there's restrooms at the north and campground shower facilities, and there's also porta-pots at the baseball area. As I recall, Parks discussed this and the decision was, once that, that building was torn down, that if there was a large event, it would be up to the event committee, or up to that event entity to figure out what their restroom needs were and to provide those for themselves.
But when it comes to Fourth of July, we are going to be paying three hundred and twenty-five dollars for our parade. We will be paying three hundred and thirty-five dollars for restrooms out of the volunteer money. We won't be able to use the porta-johns at the ballpark because they will be in the roped-off area. Just an expense that people don't need.
What are you suggesting?
I'd like to see the village cover it. I mean, we're the ones that have taken out those. We don't have a plan in place to put them back in as part of the committee of Fourth of July. We're taking on what the city was paying before to help our residents to, for an event that's for the residents. We'll probably have two thousand people out there July fourth. The restrooms in the youth building is one men, one women. And if you've been to any sporting event, you've seen the line for the women. And I think it's just going to be an invitation for trouble for somebody to be standing behind the tree.
It's fair to say we can't get anything built before that happens.
Correct.
I'm sure we can get some options as to what the cost would be for whatever size and then we can look at it. I mean, I, I agree with you ladies, we need to write something, make a motion.
Maybe the steam pressures after that. I mean, I don't know if you're planning, have you told them already or are they planning on bringing their own? Because it'd be quite a big crowd and they're actually paying us to have.
It's a serious problem. We got a contract.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. This is not for visitors right now. This is council discussion. Appreciate you wanting to interject, but let us try to figure it out.
Anyway, why don't we get some prices on what it would cost to do, you know, on various levels of putting them back in, then we can actually have a discussion as to whether it's.
Well, Fourth of July is next week.
Right, we can't get that built before Fourth of July, no matter what.
Well, no, no. But we had art explosion over the weekend. The Plain City Events Committee did, out of their funds, pay for three porta-johns to the tune of three hundred and thirty-five dollars. The art explosion was totally free. We didn't charge anybody for setting up. We didn't charge anybody for coming in, but we paid for that out of Plain City Events funds. So now we're going to come back around to July fourth and pay for three porta-johns again.
Who much does that cost?
Three hundred and thirty-five dollars. For three stops.
Firstly, I'm all for the village paying, that's the least we can do. We're not.
That's what I'm asking for.
It's public service, so.
Because we are already going to be paying three hundred and twenty-five dollars for our parade.
So is there a motion to pay for the three hundred and some dollars of port bodies on the Fourth of July?
No, they won't have to.
I'm going to motion.
Three port bodies.
The city pays for the porta-johns for the Fourth of July.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes. Thank you.
I would also like to, this part of my Park presentation, introduce a motion to, I don't know if this is ever, we discussed this, I don't remember it, but to not charge for park rental that day, the Fourth of July. But we, just to go on record, right? We normally would charge for the use of the park, but I want to make sure it's in the minutes that.
But the village wants to charge the people of the village to put on their Fourth of July event?
Well, if my family who lives in the village, if they wanted to rent the park.
But you're not doing it for the people of the village. You're putting it off our private situation.
Anyway, you can vote no on it, I guess, if you are opposed, or if you're opposed to it.
Okay.
I just think it's important that we state this because it should just be on the record that the village is donating the park for that day. So I move that the village donate the parks for the July art explosion.
That was already understood.
But yeah, see, understanding's not what we need here, we need a resolution. So it's been seconded.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else from Park?
Nope.
Okay. Personnel finding?
Nothing to report.
Fire?
We got, we got six new recruits in the fire department and they've passed the local test now and everything and they're ready to learn the procedure and how the fire department works in Plain City. And they're ready to go work. And the second thing we have coming up is a replacement levy, a ten mil, going to be on this fall for the fire department. And about, other than that, that's about it.
You said it's a replacement levy?
Replacement levy. Yeah. The levy at the end of November is a ten mil levy. It will actually replace the current ten mil levy that is due to expire at the end of this year.
Any questions? Thank you. Okay. End of our report. All business, we have the third reading of Resolution ten fourteen, which is the 2014 budget amendment.
Motion passed third reading of ten fourteen.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
No.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, third reading of Resolution twelve fourteen.
Nothing I mean to say, and that's it.
Yes, so I think we want to change that back to the second reading and to, so the motion needs to be that we're changing it back, putting back in the zero turn mower. Okay. So does someone want to make that?
Motion to approve the second reading of twelve fourteen.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
So how do we?
Just to clarify, the second reading of that one would have been for, are we going back to do the second reading, including the mower?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Second reading of Resolution thirteen fourteen, state purchasing contract.
Motion to approve thirteen fourteen for a second reading.
Excellent.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
All right, in new business, you, Mr. Lafayette just passed out an ordinance that is establishing an ordinance prohibiting and offering use of village property. You've seen the language before and you've not seen it drafted in an ordinance. Are you all okay with you moving forward with this?
Exhibit A is what we've seen before.
Exhibit A has been circulated, you guys had that. The thing that you haven't seen is the, is the cover sheet, the ordinance to pass the ordinance.
What were the ordinance?
Three, three dash fourteen.
You have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the first reading of three dash fourteen.
Second. Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Kizer?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yep.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Thank you, council. All right, this evening we have guests with us this evening that we want to give some time to, Ms. Perkins, would you like to introduce?
Oh, yes. From GGC Engineers, we have Kevin and Michael Carter, and they're going to give us a little presentation. Kevin and I have worked with them a couple of times and they did a beautiful revitalization of the small village of Lythopolis and we're hoping they can help us do something with Plain City. So I'll just turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Very quickly, my name's Mike Carter, I'm president of GGC. I have with me here tonight Brian Winkler, he's the vice president of GGC. And strangely enough, we have done work for the village before. You probably don't remember, it was quite some time ago, it was back in nineteen ninety-six, we did a water treatment plant project for it and stuff. But in the meantime, a little bit about us, is we work primarily with villages, counties, water and sewer districts, stuff like that, small cities, we stay away from the big cities because they're not that much fun to work with. I know that's really surprising, but. A while ago, I had a discussion with Kevin and we talked about downtown revitalization projects and he just recently completed one in Lythopolis, Ohio. And as a firm, we really, really enjoy doing them. They're a lot of fun. Get to roll up your shirt sleeves with people and get a lot of input from all the stakeholders and find out what it is, you know, you'd like to do. We've been involved with some challenging projects in Lythopolis, which has a lot of parallels to Plain City in that, you know, they had all these telephone poles, some of them electrical poles, some of them getting ready to fall down and everything, and it really took a lot away from what was a really scenic, pleasant little village that likes to hold festivals. They have the Lythopolis Honey Fest there in August. It's kind of a big event for them. It's weekend long now. So we got talking about street projects and found there'd be a lot of enthusiasm and talking with Leslie and Kevin about perhaps doing something here. And then we were tasked with coming up with some scenarios of what could be done and Brian was responsible for most of them, putting them together, and we discussed some of that last week. And very quickly, Brian will start on his PowerPoint here, but before we get talking more about specifics for Plain City, I'd like to show you some other things that we've done that, it's always fun, you can drag ideas from projects you've done in the past, come up with new ones. And, yeah, I hate to do this to you, but I'm sure you don't want to be blinded here.
I don't want to.
But I'll show you those projects and then Brian will take over. He promises me his presentation's going to be just as exciting as that soccer game the other day. So.
Without the last thirty seconds.
Yeah.
Do you want lights out?
Uh, might help, yeah. Make sure that, just a couple additional up here. Very quickly, one of the things that we get involved with villages and small cities is there comes a time where you have all this growth occurring when you're outlining areas. And what happens then, it takes what could be somewhat of a nice scenic vibrant downtown area and it relocates them to the outskirts. So what happens, your downtown loses its identity. We worked for the city of Kaiga Falls and they had a situation where they had all these shopping malls and all this stuff occur on the outskirts and people forgot there was a downtown. So we did a project for them to re-center things back downtown. And I know you're not looking at anything like this, but this was perhaps the coolest assignment an engineering firm could ever get. That's, design us a place where we can throw parties and have a festival. Because they were having these weekend-long festivals down there. Dancing water fountain, the lights and music, and the soundstage is particularly neat. But what really gave it safety and access to some high-end restaurants. So that's one of the things we did. Hope this works. And where our office is located, they did a similar project down there a couple years ago. Unfortunately, the timing wasn't real good, hit upon some bad economic challenges, but we were involved in that project down there too. And they had the same situation, they had horrible electrical and power poles, you know, one who fell over in a bad storm one night and shut down the entire street. So we took all that relocated to the rear alleys and downtown and did a few other things under. But that's, and if you've been down there lately, they had a big festival there last weekend. The place is just thriving now. It's really turning around. This is a, a smaller project for Kaiga Falls, and this was a area that they wanted some traffic calming, people just speeding and blasting, blowing through their 25 mile an hour limit, no one ever did 25. But they also wanted to beautify it, because they had some, um, shops, a couple restaurants that they wanted to see thrive again in what was kind of a neglected part of the neighborhood, so, um, see that big kiosk right there? They actually kicked things off by calling it Chestnut Crossing, they gave it its own name, so now everybody says, well, you know, where are you gonna go to dinner, so they go, let's go to Chestnut Crossing, so. And I'll turn things over to Brian here, just so we can talk about things specific to Plain City.
Thank you. As Mike mentioned, we're a firm in Gehanna, Ohio, and love doing these type of projects, and worked in the city before. I live just down the street, just outside of Plain City, in the, uh, small metropolis of Dublin, so. Familiar with, uh, this area quite a bit, but area we were tasked to look at, talking with Kevin and Leslie, mainly was, uh, with Main Street, basically from the, from the library, and I'm gonna use this nifty little pointer thing. Here's your, here's the library, and here's the old forty-two, um, so really kind of this area along Main Street is what we looked at. Some different options, mainly just looking at beautifying, making it a lot more pedestrian, a lot more business-friendly for the area, get a destination point for people to come to, spend their evenings, go to, go to a restaurant, go to a shop, that type of thing, so. What can we do to do that? The sidewalks down there, I'm sure as you walked, are getting to be dilapidated, sidewalks cracking, the curb is gone in a lot of places, so. There we go. I'll, it will blow up a little bit in a second, but this is just a depiction of you have a thirteen-foot sidewalk from the edge of your building to the curb, which is great, I mean, go through any area and to have a thirteen-foot sidewalk is just a luxury for the village to have, very pedestrian-friendly. So we took part of that and created a four-foot wide landscape strip and a nine-foot wide sidewalk, still very pedestrian-friendly, able for the businesses to get people in and out of, and this is kind of a blow up of that typical cross-section. Here's that four-foot grass strip, put a light pole, put trees in that area. There's another paper blow up of what's going on over there, if that helps at all. But there's some tree locations, in between the trees are light poles. Yeah, and this is a depiction of the crosswalk, this is stamped asphalt that we looked at, very, uh, maintenance-friendly also, is to use stamped asphalt, and it's getting to be a lot more economical, people are doing it more, uh, people are getting easier, it's getting easier for contractors to work with, so. We looked at three different options, here's the second option, this is, uh, almost the same thing what you just saw, except with brick edging, instead of the grass landscaped edging, uh, very walkable, and the other thing we looked at is kind of these, you see these bump outs. And I'll get to that a little more specifically on the next slide, but, um. So again, the four-foot wide section, that can be done either with brick pavers, or one thing we encourage is stamped asphalt, colored and stamped asphalt, and that's actually what you see right here, that's a picture of stamped asphalt, um, right along the street scape. And again, I didn't put any trees or light poles in here, but that's one thing that can be put into that area also. And then the third option, um, one thing we've heard a lot from Kevin is businesses want parking. We need people to get in and out of, so one thing we looked at is to add parking to the area. There's some other ideas I know the village is looking at, but we also looked at adding some parking to the street itself. Right now, you currently have three lanes, I'm gonna flip-flop a little bit here. As you approach Chillicothe Street or the old forty-two, you have three lanes of traffic, a center turn lane basically is what you have. So with forty-two being taken out and the, uh, bypass installed, what, five, seven years ago, something like that, you don't have the amount of traffic as you do anymore through the downtown area. So we're, we'll be able to eliminate that turn, uh, turn, uh, lane. So that allows us to put some, a lot more angled parking in that area. Easier to get in, in and out of, it's actually a traffic calming also, because in order to back out, traffic has to stop for you to get at, in and out of that little spots. Slows traffic down, I know your speed limit through there is twenty-five, um, I travel through there quite a bit, heading to seventy. I know people up go to twenty-five most of the time through there, uh, plus you have large trucks still going through there using the 161. So, uh, this would calm the area down, make it a lot more pedestrian-friendly. Again, highlight the, uh, crosswalks with the brick asphalt. This is one area I did not blow up, but that's an alley that could be closed off, throw some bike racks, landscaping, brick pavers, or stamped asphalt, or stamped concrete in that area, lots of options basically to look at, but. The main thrust is traffic calming, pedestrian-friendly, and business-friendly. Get some businesses in there, revitalize that, some of those buildings. One area also we looked at, and I'm gonna, sorry, new clicker for me, I'm not used to this, is the area right in here can also be a destination point, or a small gathering area for the village. You have the mural on the building right here, um, this alley can also be closed off, and put in some brick pavers, some benches, uh, landscaping, and I can blow that up a little more. There we go. So yes, the real estate office, I think someone mentioned, is, is right here, and there's still adequate, there's still some parking there, we did not show some parking he has in the front hall sitting here. But, uh, there is room to have a little small gathering space, I mean, we can put benches throughout the sidewalk, but that is a small little gathering space with some, uh, landscaping. And my fun PowerPoint, that gives you a small little picture of what goes on there, excuse some of my PowerPoint, but, uh. So again, that's, uh, just some landscaping, some benches in there, um, the brick pavers, the brick edging with the sidewalk. But one thing I didn't elaborate on that is depicted quite well in this picture is you don't see the maze of power poles and wires. And that's really another thing that we're trying to achieve here. This is a replacement traffic signal, um, with everything underground or moved to the back rear alleys. You have, you have. There's overhead power already back here, there's overhead power back here. We preliminarily talked with AEP to move everything to the rear alleys, and get it off of your main strip, or main street. So, that gets rid of, you see all the drawings I have here, and images. There's no power poles, I know most of them are on this side of the street, but there's no maze of wires going back and forth on the road. In about five, ten years, those power poles are gonna have to be replaced anyways, because you look at them. One of the days I was out here taking pictures, actually, um, you had a crew coming in, I assume worked for AEP, they were actually based out of Texas, repairing some of these power poles, they said they did over two hundred in town. So, just, uh, putting bands on them, just to kind of hold them together for another three, five years, so that we don't have to replace them right now. Again, showing the angled parking, the bump outs for traffic calming, more pedestrian space, um, more eating area for the pizza place that's right down, Forty-two Grill?
Roadhouse.
Clubhouse, Roadhouse, Roadhouse, thank you, Forty-two Roadhouse, um, just down here, um, more seating area for them. And light poles, but, uh, here are the traffic lights, or traffic signals. Minimized, took one out of this area here, put a pole here, three poles basically, minimize as much as possible, put everything on the ground, clean it up a little bit. That's it, so here's your single power pole, overhead light, um, with your signal pole, signal lights. Still operation the same that it is now, without the maze of wires, without everything dangling down, without the old wooden poles. So that's, again, what we're, um, looking at, some of the ideas still in preliminary stages, but different options you can look at. So, everybody's wondering what's it gonna cost, of course. So, very preliminarily, we looked at the option of not the angled parking initially. I'm sorry, I keep going back and forth, but roughly this, this setup with the bump outs, keeping the, uh, traffic situation the way it is right now. And, bottom line, I want to point out a few of these large numbers you're looking at. AEP cost is your three hundred thousand right here. So, that's for AEP to take their power lines, move them to the rear, uh, put them in the back alleys. And then, getting, your biggest cost is going to be your traffic pole, traffic lights. Getting every, all the maze of wires right there on the intersection, it's about a half million dollars, that is a big chunk, I will say right up front to do. Everything else is basically aesthetics, sidewalk, sidewalk with a stamped brick finish, um, your ADA crosswalks, street lighting, um, and all these street lights are gonna have the base with plugins for Christmas lights, or lighting, festival lighting, any other type of lighting, you'll have plugins for anything you need underneath. So, I understand that's a big chunk, and I'm going to pass it on to David here, David Kell with Madison, I'll let you introduce. But, uh, we've looked at some different funding options, uh, very preliminarily, and there is funding sources available for this, so.
Okay, my name's David Kell, I'm from Madison County, Community Improvement Corporation, so not-for-profit, uh, development organization in Madison County. Just wanted to touch on some possible funding sources that we had looked at for, for the project as a whole, and, uh, just referring back to the previous slide you're in mind, we're really, for these programs, for these different programs, we're focusing on where the first seven lives or where these are gonna help a whole lot. First is a program with the Ohio Department of Transportation called the Transportation Alternatives Program. Uh, this is a program that's focused on, uh, improving transportation, uh, opportunities for non-motorized, uh, vehicles or modes of transportation, so sidewalks, safe routes, the crosswalks, uh, and then there's other things with regards to restore preservation and scenic environmental, uh, uh, entities that, that this program focuses on. I did, they asked for me to put the, uh, how much funding is available with each of these programs, and also the process, please review, it does get kind of complicated, but a lot of these programs also, they do ask for local match or local contributions, and there's different sources. I know some communities, uh, back where I originally worked in Green County, they use, uh, different programs from different, uh, different agencies as matched dollars, and there's also local dollars from the, from the community, through various means to, uh, support these types of projects and gain this type of funding. Ohio Department of Development, Development Services Agency has a community development block grant. There's actually two different programs within, within the block grant program, and that's the community allocation program, uh, community allocation portion. And so every, every year, uh, counties and then certain communities, uh, receive grant dollars that can be put towards, uh, public improvement projects that benefit, uh, individuals within a community. So Madison County receives a certain allocation every year, and local, and communities within the county can apply for, go to the county commissioners with a project and ask, uh, for these dollars, uh, that, that, that have, that have been given to Madison County. Typically, there's a scoring system, I know Madison County contracts its service out, but you would, you would, uh, score a different project based on certain criteria that were set, and, and projects that receive the highest scores would then be awarded, sometimes a whole full amount requested, other times a proportionate, if that's all that's available for a particular project. There's also the, uh, community development block grant downtown revitalization program, this actually, this program is actually, it, it went away in 2012 and 2014, it just started back up, so this is the first year that's backed up and going, and this is perfect for a project like this focused on a downtown of a community. It's, it's focused on, uh, community, improving the central business district, benefiting a, a lower moderate income population, and eliminating slum and blight, improves blighted streetscapes, rehabilitate deteriorating facades, and address different code violations within, uh, within particular facilities. About forty percent of the total CB, CDBG funds that's available throughout the state, and in fiscal year fourteen, the number in parentheses is twenty million, that was the total number that was, uh, with the CDBG program throughout the entire state, so about forty percent of that, you're looking at about eight grand or so, or eight million, I'm sorry, that would be, and this is a statewide competitive grant, so you're competing against communities in northeast Ohio, Toledo area, Appalachia, but it's very competitive, but it's a, it's a, it's a good funding source for a focused, um, focused project like this. And the last is a public OPWC, um, Global Transport, Transportation Improvement Program, Small Governments. Mike and I have talked a little bit, we, we, you know, we think there might be some opportunities with this program, it, I think we're depending on what the project would be, and how we phase the project, and, 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 and certain specifics on what this program would qualify, uh, but I'd like to.
If I could interject, I should, Linda Baylor, who's with District Loan and OPWC, and literally everything we're doing here would be applicable to that program, so we could get up to half a million dollars for the grant loan mix.
Yes, right, absolutely, if you look at the purpose, I went through the, the previous, first, projects that have been awarded funding, eligible areas improvements include sidewalks, curb and gutter, roadway utility relocation and improvements, and also standard decorative lighting. So, that program, Mike said he confirmed it would be a great opportunity for this. I talked about the application pro, uh, process, probably at the bottom of the back of year, so just, just those years, um, but, so this is, if we get, you know, some momentum going now, we could definitely apply to this upcoming, upcoming round. So, there are dollars out there, uh, for a project like this, um, and of course, my role as, as your economic development agency is to work with you to put together these grant applications, work with Mike's office, and, and see what we could, what we could get for the village, so.
If I could interject also, there are some other innovative things in the mix too, that it's a little bit premature to talk about it now, but I think whenever you do a project such as this, you want to provide for the future, and one of the things we did in Gehanna is we laid conduit, uh, when the lines were being relocated. And one of the things we did in Yehana is we laid conduit when the lines were being relocated and everything for, you know, future cabling. You know, and actually, what happens is, I know Dublin's real big on this, they installed the conduit and then they lease it out to companies. So, there's a lot of innovative things that can be done also to help offset some of the cost of, you know, moving the power around and things like that. But it's pretty early on in the process for that now, but that stuff's evolving every month it seems like, so. I think you have an exciting project. I think it'll, the things it'll do when you open up that street is just amazing. Lithopolis is probably the best example. When they repaired the streets, took down those power poles, relocated the power, it just literally jump-started the whole downtown idea. The mayor down there's a very, very innovative thinker and knew that that was one of the things they had to do there. Of course, your streets actually in that stretch aren't too bad. Streets in Lithopolis had zero base to them, they were all torn up, everything, you know, you'd lose a fillip driving down there at the speed limit. So, that was a big improvement, but, you know, they had to move that Lithopolis honey fest from one day to two days. For the overwhelming enthusiasm that's going on for it. So, it's a good impetus to give, you know, Plain City new identity, to make some things happen, to jump-start things. You know, maybe somebody doesn't want to live in Marysville because of the taxes, why not a nice place like Plain City? Or they don't want to shop there. We just, Dublin's just getting, Brian likes it, but it's good for you to do that.
What's the estimate of time that a project like this typically takes?
Construction ones? Probably about, Brian, six months, nine months?
For the actual construction would be six months or less, probably. The timeframe leading into it is quite a bit more with AEP having to relocate their power poles, with the lead time with the signal. That's the lengthy process there, so.
I know everybody got sticker shock too, seeing the numbers on that, the traffic signalization equipment, everything. You'll never believe how expensive those poles are, they're exorbitantly expensive, you'd think they were made out of gold or something. But, a very complex structure, you have to have a real BV base for the big single arm units, because they're cantilevered out so much and everything. We just did a bunch up in Cogga Falls and they were, geez, they were curved, which made it that much more expensive. They were, I think, eighty-five thousand feet.
And they're steel, we all know what steel prices have gone.
Can something like this be done in phases? I mean, largely our ability to do this is probably will be determined by our ability to obtain the grants.
Right.
So, can this be done in, like, phased?
Yeah.
It could be, if there are economies of scale for doing it all at once, because, you know, you only have to bid something out, or whatever, like, you have those costs. But, yes, it could be, certain, you know, components that are committed at least.
Patrick, remember though, how many policies in electric, in the poles, whether it's the intersection poles or AEP?
Looking at the preliminary cost estimate, that looks like basically an implementation cost. Is there pre-engineering cost, is there engineering costs, as far as looking at the site, understanding what's below the ground that you're going to possibly run into?
Yes.
So I'd be real interested in what the estimates for pre-engineering, for putting, finalizing the design, putting the specifications together, and coming up with the overall construction plan. I sense that there could be a lot of engineering costs there.
There is, typically for a project like this too, it's around eight to ten percent.
Eight to ten?
I'm guessing it's gonna be closer to eight. In this case, that's survey, that's utility, you know, investigation, things like that. But, I'd say between eight and nine percent's a good ballpark. Those are what we call soft costs, and you were very astute to notice they weren't on there. But that does not include things during construction too, like inspection, construction administration and such. Normally, those expenses you can get partially offset, if not totally offset, by grants and stuff. I know the Ohio Public Works Commission pays for that kind of, those kind of services, so they're very-
Is there a certain percentage, the cities you've done have seen in business growth after you've done the project?
I don't have exact numbers for you, but in the city of Cogga Falls, this is, they were having one weekend festival a month. And that has pretty much gone to one, sometimes two, but in addition to that, they have events there every Friday and Saturday night now. And it was so hugely popular that when they had more or less shut the thing down in the winter, they hired us for a phase two there where we designed a mechanically refrigerated ice skating rink. That could be erected in a couple of weeks' time, and they have events down there all winter long now. So, it's really done great things there. As for revenue figures, really can't address that. I know one of the things, the pavilion building, the three-story building back there, your conversation earlier about restrooms and stuff, there are eighty-five toilet fixtures in that building. Because in the past, they were just using those portelets and everything, now they have nice clean facilities there. And the upper stories of the buildings, they actually rent out to residents as event centers. I mean, you have high school, classical reunions there, you can have wedding receptions, stuff like that, and it's actually generating cash flow. And it's, you know, Lithopolis is the perfect example, Wesley and Kevin went down there, and I just wish you'd seen it before. Kevin found some photos on Google Earth that showed just what a mess it was before, but it's really vibrant now.
I grew up there.
Oh, did you really? Have you been there recently?
I haven't, it's probably been about two years.
Night festivals and fun.
I have another question, please. I think Brian mentioned that the cost estimate up here was for the bump out option?
Correct.
Okay.
Kind of the second option.
So, so if we were interested in the head-in option, how much higher would it be higher?
It'd be slightly higher, because you're coming into the roadway a lot more.
Okay.
So, a lot more asphalt work, a lot more permitting would be necessary. Maybe two hundred.
Now, the bump out is the mid-range, correct?
Correct.
Okay, what's the least expensive option?
Just the landscaped instead of a brick concrete paver, so you can knock a little bit off there. Or getting rid of those small bump outs entirely, so you're just going basically curb to curb, rather than bumping out into the roadway with those. The biggest issue with the bump outs from a construction and engineering cost factor is you, your water now has to find, your storm water has to find a place to go, so you're-
I noticed that in your profiles there.
Yeah, you're, basically, you're, you're putting in a lot more storm structures, catch basins and underground storm sewer in order to handle that slow. Otherwise, you're gonna have tracked areas and puddling all over the place.
So, with the landscaped option compared to the one point six million, would it go up too if we went head-in, if we went landscaped? What would it?
Probably, without the bump outs, probably down to, I mean, again, very preliminary cost. And that, and those are the options that we want to work with, counsel the village. Mike always, Mike's mentioned Cogga Falls quite a bit. We had fifty public meetings on that Falls River Square project for, it involved amphitheater, a building. Whether they were going to close the road or keep the road, we ended up keeping the road, putting an underground tunnel underneath the amphitheater. So, but, we held fifty public meetings during the course of that preliminary through final design phase for that project, so.
And those meetings were very helpful, and sorry to interject again, but one of the things that even occurred that you could do somewhere on this project, is they had an area where, in this case, it was a fountain. Where they allowed whoever wanted to to buy a commemorative brick and put in this fountain. They raised a hundred thousand dollars doing that, and had to shut people off. At the very last minute, they wanted us to make that thing bigger, and there physically wasn't any room to do it, because they got such an overwhelming response. But it's, you know, the community buy-in, it's an opportunity to completely renovate the downtown and have a piece and a part of it, have your input. But some of the public meetings involve things just as generic and simple as, do the seats in the amphitheater have cup holders? But that's the kind of input you want from a community, I mean, you want to get the details right, and you want to get the community buy-in. You want everybody, everybody has, you know, pretty much has a valid idea or a good idea. Get it all out, get it implemented, and then David and I will try to figure out a way for it. So, they're actually, like I said, fun projects. Our bread and butter is water and wastewater and, you know, road work and stuff like that, but these are the things, these kind of projects are what allow us to get, you know, take our nerd hats off and do some fun stuff. So, really like working with communities, getting their ideas, and those are the main.
Is Lithopolis on a state route?
They are not. Are they?
Yeah.
Oh, they are, but they have their own jurisdiction within the corporate limits, just as you do here.
I was just thinking about here with this, when you white roads come through town, the bump outs are going to be really bad.
Well, you have a great base under there right now, I mean, ODOT's laid a good base under that roadway road.
They give you fourteen-foot wide for that, you come through town here with two twelve-foot lanes.
Yeah, we, actually, you have less than that right now.
Pardon?
I believe you have less than that right now.
That's why I would take it the bump outs would be worse.
No, we would maintain the minimum width, twelve foot, actually.
We'd lose sidewalk.
You may, with the angled parking, you'd lose a little bit of sidewalk, plus we'd lose that center lane that, as we mentioned. That center lane gains you a lot if you remove it, so, but you might lose, I think we laid it out where maybe a foot or two of sidewalk that you'd lose out of your thirteen-foot wide sidewalk.
With regard to Lithopolis, you know, and again, I, you know, apples to oranges comparison by the total numbers, but what percentage was paid for just by grant alone, out of their total loans, if you know? That particular project is a little bit larger than yours, we accomplished half of it, they received OPWC money for that. Total is about one point seven five million, Brian?
I believe so, and I believe it was just under one five grant, or through OPWC, which I believe was fifty-fifty loan grant. So it was about forty-forty grant loan and twenty percent, I don't recall whether there was some financial调整 or something else.
They've not done the second phase of yet, but that was the phase one. So in phase one, it was roughly forty percent was accomplished through grant?
Right.
And then forty percent through loans, and then a balance from, whatever, federal fund or whatever. They're doing some innovative stuff, they're marking utility corridor, and there's a higher revised code now allows utilities that are in that corridor to charge the maintenance fee every year. So, what they do is they take a twenty-year number, what they think it's going, and they have to justify it, but they've been able to do this, of what it's going to cost to maintain that space, and they can build the utility companies for that. And that has stopped some other things too, like before the utility companies was coming in, they'd just rip up roadway, you know, just saw through it and everything like that. Now there's a whole new process where they can't go and abuse it. When you're going, when you're looking at the power lines, you're coming in from the back, from behind the buildings, and I know that there's some alleys there. Were you able to, at least when you were doing the design layout of that, could you see that, were we gonna be able to access the power lines without getting additional easements?
Yeah, for the most part, your alleys will suffice in tying everything in, and on the, I believe it's north side, I get my north and south confused. North side were Forty Two, where up is located, I believe there's only three electric ties in, tie-ins from Main Street. Everything else is already from the rear. Yeah, and once you move, once you move electric, phone and cable have no choice but to go along with them.
I just want to make sure we're not, we don't have to appropriate more easements and do more messy things. You know, preliminarily, without getting into detailed design or anything, it does not appear so, but, you know, when you put pen to paper, sometimes things will pop up.
Can I piggyback on your question? How about the south side? If you move the electric from Main Street back to Bigelow, are the businesses and the residents going to have to change their service intervals? And if they do, is there grants available to help them offset the cost of that?
That would be part of the AEP's relocation fees.
They would have to take care of that? Without charging, without charging the businesses?
That would be built into those costs that we have, the numbers identified also, already. A lot of those businesses, I recall, and I have to look at the map to make sure, but some of those businesses back up to, I think it's Bigelow is the next road to the south. So, they're already, their property line already goes to the rear, so connecting that way would be quite simple for AEP to do. Whether they're tying in from via the alley, I don't know if any tie-in directly in the middle of the road, it's something we'd have to look at. But that would be built into the estimate that we have for AEP's relocation cost.
So, to be clear, it wouldn't be passed on to the businesses?
No, no. And as we mentioned, we did all this for City of Yehana when they did the Creekside project, and it was handled the same way. Businesses weren't charged anything in order to relocate, and they had to actually go underground. They went from overhead to underground, and that was all built into the AEP costs, not passed on to the businesses at all.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, I was just, I was just wanting, because I know that some of them, I think, get service from the front.
Yes.
If you look at the, where the cocktail is, all of their service comes from the front.
There were some that were serviced from the side.
And the other question I had was, you were talking about the sidewalk. Correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but I believe the city only owns the first two feet of the sidewalk, and then the rest of that sidewalk is owned by the businesses. So if you start taking any more than the first two feet, what do you do? Do you have to buy that from the businesses, and is that factored in?
I think we looked at that, isn't it, the right-of-way basically starts at the edge of the buildings?
I don't know, I definitely, I mean, obviously generally the right-of-way starts at the center line, so I don't know what our setup is. I haven't looked at that issue, so I don't know.
I think that's what Eric ran into, is that Eric was, I was cheap, did he only, he has the sidewalks from two feet in from the curb over to his building is his. And the rest from the two foot out to the curb is the city's.
What, what, what's going on?
Put an amp on there, but you may want to look into it.
What would have to be done is there'd be a construction easement for doing a public improvement on a private property generated. Because I don't believe that any business or property owner out there would, if they knew that their business or building was going to be benefited, would have any objection. But you're correct, we'd have to look at that very closely.
I think the benefits outweigh all of the other.
Definitely.
Yes.
Any other questions for David or?
Would the electric have to be improved going into the building to meet the county code?
It would have to be, it would have to be at the code.
If, if it's not code compliant now. Well, they're not gonna go into the buildings to make sure that inside the buildings are code compliant. They just want to know at the connection point where their meter is, is code compliant.
Thank you very much, guys. Thank you very much, guys.
You know, hey, there's a lot more up here, so. No, there's, there's a lot more up here, I was out. No problem.
All right, Council. All right, thank you both of you.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank Leslie and Kevin for spending all the time with us today and having some fun.
All right, Council. Where do we go?
Want to do a adjournment?
All right.
I have a question that don't have anything to do with the park or anything. I just have a question about the Facebook page or the webpage.
I want to know why council? Hang on one minute. Home procedure. Lucy just presented.
She doesn't get a second.
We do have a second.
Oh, you did have a second?
Yeah.
You got a vote on it?
We have to vote.
You can sit there or you can vote.
Are you, do you want to?
Do we have a sign-in sheet? Did we follow up with the signature tonight? Did we not provide one?
Is this a public meeting or not?
I guess I'll just say, okay, Council.
Do we have a second on the recent? All right, so we are back in public session. All right. Could you state your name?
My name is Sherry Penny and I have been looking on our webpage. Why has not Council Minutes been updated since two fourteen? I mean, I'd like to get on there and be able to look and see. I'm not always available when it comes to the meetings, but nowhere do I find Council Minutes. Used to, they tacked them up and when I paid my water bill, I'd glance at them as I went in to pay my water bill every month. I'm uptown every month. Then they put them on the webpage, okay, that's fine, I can look on the computer, but it's not been updated in so long. And people would like to know what, what's happening.
Well, they have to be approved before they can go up. So however long that takes, whether they get approved in a normal timeframe or not. And I'm not sure if they're not current. We have, have had change of employees, so we have got to go back and try to get back on track with some of that with the current employees. And I'm trying to get things on the site. We lost also, if you recall, well, you may not recall, but we lost the individual who used to keep all that updated. And we've tried, in fact, started desperate to offer to help us with that. We're going to have to.
Well, until then, can we get some, you know, draft off the notes and stick it up there like we used to by the water office and that little thing by the council offices?
There are four locations, five locations.
Not for the minutes.
Not for the minutes.
No. No, there's not, not anywhere.
Anytime anyone, anytime anyone wants to copy the minutes or they want to see the minutes, you just stop by the administrative office. If you're there for your water bill, you can ask Renee for a copy of it.
Thanks. Is there someone else?
I have another question. You guys are going to help with the Fourth of July with restrooms, why not help the steam thrusters out? Because we signed a contract and technically those restrooms were in that contract.
Nope.
We just need showers. Because that next door says that we don't need.
Well, that's a good question. Council, any thoughts?
At first, I see the fireworks as a public, we're putting something out for the public. But the steam thrusters is a private organization choosing to use our parks and we treat them as we do everyone else. But the Fourth of July, I see, is completely different in the sense that we're doing it for the public. And we're doing it for the public.
It is a village. You can consider.
Well, and we are a five oh one C three. And we have done a lot of work for that park, a lot. And we do bring people into the city and the businesses do profit from the people we bring in.
So the question is, the Fourth of July committee, is that also a nonprofit? So it's a registered organization as well?
We are a registered nonprofit, yes.
So there technically, then that is not a city event, right? We, we are, so if it's two, two separate organizations legally, just from a legal standpoint?
It's all outside.
Is that how, is that what I say, legally?
Probably something we should have stated when we were talking about it before and maybe I should have piped up on it. Not to take away from the fact that it's a Fourth of July event and we're expecting a lot of community participation. Because of the budget cuts and everything else that we had to make over the last few years, this is a privately funded event, privately sponsored event. And Leslie, you headed up that effort to get it there. And so it is a privately funded organization. And frankly, as far as your council is concerned, if you're going to offer a private particip, a private funding or privately funded, if you're going to waive the cost for it for the Fourth of July, I would, my position would be to probably waive it for the steam thrusters as well.
So this falls clearly under note that it goes unpunished.
Mr. Vaughn, what about when we went into, entered into the contract, were the restrooms working at that time?
Yes.
We used the restrooms last July.
So since the time we signed the deal, the restrooms are kind of, literally are gone, but before that they were just unusable. We moved toward it down, so it wasn't an option to keep them. Financially, to fix them, as the park, we looked at that. So would we take the same amount for, same amount of money for the porta potties?
How many other entities will be doing this for?
Well, that's the question, but we went into this contract, that's my point. We entered into the contract, we had worked with restrooms. I think from this point going forward, if we go into contract with any one large group, we would make it known to them that these are the facilities, we use the park as is. But because we did enter that contract with the understanding of there would be adequate facilities and now it seems that there's not.
So we do have under contract to mid Ohio scooter, classic scooter.
So that's another, we went into contracts.
We are in contract with them.
So are we in contract with the Fourth of July committee? So that problem still remains. We do it for the Fourth of July, we've set the precedent that we do it for any and every person who claims to have a gathering at the park then? And there's no distinguishable factors because the steam thrusters.
I think you have to make that decision. Now, where are you going to draw the line?
We're only talking three hundred and thirty-five dollars an event. You have to offset what steam thruster's done for this village.
That's not what they're saying. They're not saying it's not a value. They're trying to determine how to manage a situation where because a building had to come down due to its function. Now we have to make a decision about what, how best to use village money when it comes to presented with a situation where we could have how many events a year that we spend three hundred and thirty-five dollars because we don't have the facilities.
Well, maybe I could help narrow it down, at least to a couple or something. The scooters, are they a five oh one C three? Steam thrusters are a five oh one C three? And this, is this a five oh one C three?
Not yet. But I am hoping that we, I will not have to continually raise money for fireworks. I'm hoping the village will come back and step up and do fireworks once again.
Yeah, we all live here, we like to run toward the park and fireworks and I just don't see all this nitpicking about it. We're paying for the fireworks, you know? It's for everybody that lives here.
Mr. Vaughn, how many folks are in contract with us now? How many organizations are in contract with us? Any groups we have already on the books that are non-for-profit, any other than we spoke about tonight?
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts.
The Boy Scouts are out in the camp then, correct?
Yes, well, it's now, they're, they're.
They take up the whole park.
They brought in porta potties too.
And you brought in the porta potties for the Boy Scouts?
They paid for that.
My whole suggestion or my whole recommendation is that council has to view these participants in a neutral light. That's our job. And so we have to look at each event, we can't look at the event or the participant, we have to look at the category or class of them and be neutral and review them so that we're treating everybody fairly. So we're not treating one group favorably or unfavorably versus others. So it could be something where if we look at the fiscal year going forward and if we're concerned about offering, you know, three thirty-five here, three thirty-five there, three thirty-five there, that we look at it at the calendar year, what do we have for the rest of this year? And, and cutting it off at timeframe and then making that evaluation at some point later for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. I'm just throwing it out there for consideration and trying to give some other options.
Is there plans to restore it? Because I thought when we had discussed it previously, there was plans, the park was discussing plans to rebuild something.
Well, it only takes money, so we would have to figure out where that money would come from and it's a significant amount.
There's, there's been discussion in the Parks Committee of creating a restroom that has a kitchen or kitchenette within the same building as well as a shelter house coming out of it. And where that would be located, perhaps putting it on the other side of the road so as to less disturb the neighbors to the east. I think that is the master plan of the Parks Committee. We've discussed nature works grants. However, the state went from a yearly grant in nature works every other year now. It is coming up and that would be something I start working on in August for a nature works grant for two thousand and fifteen. I'm not sure if we're going to, to be ready for that grant at that point. It's going to be, and that would have to move really quick through the Parks Committee and design and plans and all of that, so.
And I'm not rushing, trying to rush it.
That is the master plan, I believe, is what they discussed. So there is plans to, to reconstruct some sort of restroom facility there.
Somewhere in the future.
Yes.
All right, Council. How do you want to leave this this evening?
So the question in front of us then is, do we want to basically bind ourselves to any time, if anyone has anything within the park to provide them restroom services or not? Because we can't do it for some and do it for, not do it for others. Unless there's an exception that we can find that applies to, for example, the Fourth of July and not to others. And whether we can carve out that exception legally. So I don't know if that's something we can table until, you know, we get the Fourth of July coming up.
Well, I would say with the Fourth of July, they are not a five oh one C three. And we have said that we support that event to date, we have said that. Perhaps that's what you do this year until they become a five oh one C three, I don't know.
I mean, I don't see what the five oh one C three distinction is for anyway. Anyone can go throw the fifty bucks at the, you know, Secretary of State and call themselves a five oh one C three after they get to paperwork.
No point.
I mean, why draw that distinction? That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Again, I was throwing out, I was throwing out a distinction of, some distinction. You know, again, this is being thrown at me right now to try to come up with a, you know, get the old legal brain going here, come up with something that, that justifies it and treats everybody fair, fairly. You've already voted on the Fourth of July. And if it's for the steam thrusters, we still have another meeting before the steam thrusters come.
Will the porta potties still be there for the steam thrusters, the ones that are currently there? They won't be behind, like Leslie said, behind there where no one's allowed to go. There will be porta potties there. Of course, this doesn't address the issue that we're not providing them, but something else.
Are you talking about the fall field?
And also, like the groups, like the Boy Scouts, how many Boy Scouts come out?
I think we had six hundred.
Okay. So, I mean, you're looking at Boy Scouts that have, there's two bathrooms in the youth building and I assume they're all Boy Scouts. So they could use both bathrooms in the youth building and the bathrooms by the campers. That wouldn't be bad for that size of a group. When we're talking about Fourth of July where we have two thousand plus of men and women, we need the porta potties. Same as steam thrusters.
We can't start drawing the distinctions based upon projected population to show up. I mean, we can't, how do we do that?
That, that will be their question. If they find that you have covered the cost for another entity, that will be their question.
I think, let's say, for example, we were still putting on the Fourth of July and ignoring the discussion that I think we have to have ultimately whether we choose to take it over to the future. If we were putting it on and we had no bathrooms, would we provide porta potties? Answer is clearly yes, we would provide some form of restrooms. What is different there than now? And whatever that distinction is, that's the distinction we drawing now in the sense that, what are we saying? If we're putting it on, let's say, for example, some cities do it in conjunction with, like I know Lancaster, Kroger helps pay for a portion of it and they sponsor it. They're paying for a part of it. And they're, I mean, and the city's still providing all the services at the park and, you know, whatever that may be. How is that any different then than what we're doing here than if we are putting it on, albeit our part is less than, for example, in my example, that Lancaster's paying for? That's a difference. Do you understand what I'm getting at? It's still our event being paid largely by an outside entity, but it's still our event, it's still Plain Cities event. It's not the steam thrusters, it is a local holiday put on by Plain City. Now, I don't want to ignore Leslie's efforts because I think we all thank her largely for them. But that distinction of what any city does except donations or whatever from outside entities, be it for profit or nonprofit, they still do those things. And whatever allows them to do those things should allow us to do that, provide the restrooms and not open ourselves up to having to provide it for any other outside agency or organization that wants to use the park.
So my question is, and I guess I would slightly disagree, I would say that the function is not Plain Cities. They, it is private donations, but it happens to take place on public property.
Where does people come from?
We, we, well, we say that about everything that goes on in the park. And every event that happens in our park is full of Plain City residents for the most part. So that, that argument doesn't really hold. But my question is officially, is this one of our events? Are we, were we involved in the planning of it? Were we involved in the, the event schedule? Who was going to perform, when they were going to perform? Is there any cost associated with providing police and fire? Are we, I mean, maybe we just need to refresh our memory on, is this an official event sponsored by the village of Plain City? Or is this a organization that is putting on fireworks at a park in Plain City?
Well, I guess not, because nobody else wanted to do it.
Well, I don't know if that's.
It was not a priority to the, to the village to have fireworks. It was not a priority to the village to have a Fourth of July parade. So a handful of us stepped up to do it.
Yes, but I'm asking right now, Leslie, not to be the person in charge of fireworks. I'm asking you to separate yourself from that and be a councilman and not conflict the two. Because we're trying to decide what's best for the village, not what's best for your organization that you started before you became a councilperson. I think we all are for the fireworks, but we're trying to decide, do we do it for this group? Do we have to do it for every group? Are we figuring ourselves up for liability? We're already in a contract with the group. They made a contract with us when we had certain facilities and now we don't have those facilities. This has nothing to do really with your specific event. It's a wonderful thing, but it is one of many events that take place in our parks. So that's the question I'm asking. Is this an official Plain City event? Or have we let a organization use the park for their wonderful activity that most of the community will come out for? That's the question. The second question is liability wise or legally wise, since we've entered into a contract and the condition of the park has changed. There are three.
I believe I'd have to double verify that, but.
Three that we have entered into when we had restroom facilities and now we don't. Do we have to somehow modify those, pay for the restrooms or something like that? So, can, can we get an official answer on this? Is the fireworks, is it an official Plain City event? Or is it a community organization using our parks?
How do we define that?
Well, I would define it as how I define it, do we have any, say, in the event itself? Are we, I mean, this is not about the fourth, really, it's about are we treating every group that comes to us equally? And are we honoring our contracts that we've made?
You have your say when the city decided not to do it any longer, that's what your say was, the villages can't do it any longer. That's when you had your say as council.
All right, so it's, but thank you, but let me ask these folks up here who, um, I, because nobody, I think, on council wanted the fireworks to go away. We made cuts because there's only so many resources out there, and they weren't the only thing cut. Now, we can bring up the discussion whether we want to bring them back next year, but that doesn't still solve the problem for this year and the other folks who are in contract with us for the park. So this, can anybody answer the question? Is this an official Plain City event, or is it an organization using our park?
I can tell you that official, I, I don't know how you're defining that, but, um, in the past, when we gave money toward the Fourth of July, we considered it an event that we sponsored and supported. And the same, um, I can tell you the contract that I gave to the fireworks company is for the village of Plain City. It's supported by the committee of fireworks, it's being paid by the village, or by the committee.
And so who signed that contract, in what capacity was this contract signed?
I presented it to Kevin, and Kevin said that the committee could sign it because we were paying for it.
Right, you're paying for it, the village is not.
The village is not, but it is for the, it, it states that it is for the village of Plain City.
The same way that residents of Plain City could come to your festival and enjoy what you're putting on, right? It's, it is a community festival. A non-for-profit organization that raises. So it just seems like we, we can't play favorites when it comes to big nonprofit groups that want to benefit the community, whether it be fireworks, steam thrusters, or motor scooter, or whatever.
Seems to me that's what we've always done.
Well, we were, we were paying for it.
Who's paying for it, or what's paying for it, how is that different?
Yep.
Why does that change?
Groups that want to support the village, shouldn't the village support nonprofit groups that want to support the village?
I, I agree with that, I don't see who's paying for what, how that is a distinction. It's still the Fourth of July, that doesn't change anything, it's no different, like I said, than another, any other municipality accepting donations from an outside organization. Does that change the fact that it's still that the municipality putting on, putting it on, allowing?
Well, I think the only distinction that I see, and again, I'm trying not to stick my nose into any of what's seeming like it's going to become a policy decision, but I'm, when, the only distinction that I see is when some other place, you know, some other municipality has a fireworks and has a Fourth of July festival, they, the municipality takes ownership of that, and they hire the fireworks company, they pay for the fireworks company, they accept the donation from Kroger to pay for the fireworks. But the, the, the village itself, or the community itself, is the one that's signing the contracts for the people to come in and put on the services and to allow everybody into that. That's the only distinction.
Can they accept the liability?
Yeah, and this, obviously, this is an unfortunate circumstance this year, where the village, you know, whatever, I mean, we're not paying for it, we're not hosting the fireworks. I mean, we're hosting them because people are coming to the village for it, but the village council, because of financial cuts, didn't pay for the fireworks, and so.
But your citizens have paid for the fireworks this year. I mean, citizens are the ones that have done it.
Is there any difference between, so for the scooter show and for the steam thrusters, they charge admission? So does that at all change the question at all for us?
Yeah, I think that's a fair, very fair point.
Everybody does this pretty soon, we won't have any events at the park at all. Yep, after this mess, I'm done.
Yeah.
Can I say something? You might want to check into what it would cost to have porta jones put out for the summer.
For the season.
For the season, because a lot of the cost is the delivery and the pickup of those porta jones. And that way, you know, bring them out first of May, leave them till the end of October. I go out there and walk my dog all the time, it'd be a nice place, you know, it'd be nice to have porta jones out there. So, and then that would cover all those events, and you wouldn't have to argue about it.
Well, the other thing is, the city doesn't have to pay for the fireworks this year. Somebody else is, so they ought to be able to absorb something for the community.
Well, the fireworks, we've already decided they're not going to pay for them. The question is, have we painted ourselves in the corner legally, but I think there's enough ground for us to say, since the other groups are charging admission, that will, I think, perhaps buy us a little time to distinguish between the two types of events, where there's a page, and then we can have another meeting. Where we can maybe see a little legal precedent on this.
I think we need to look at what the cost difference is to having it for the summer or just for the festival.
Leslie, did you get those estimates?
No, no, because I, I just threw this together this week for the art explosion over the weekend.
So I think I'm hearing a common theme, that we've made a decision that fireworks, we're not dealing with a time-sensitive thing that's going to take place before our next regular meeting, so there's time for a little bit of research and discussion at our next meeting, so I think we addressed the subject.
Paul, I would like to just ask, when you look into this, is, I think the big two things that I think all of us are. So, charge admission versus not charging admission. But even if they are charging admission, they entered a contract in with the village of Plain City under the assumption that there would be working restroom facilities. So that also may change how we deal with it, because whether they charge admission or not, we have a contract with them. So, you know, that, that's another thing. And then, I guess maybe just the idea, is it not such a legal thing, but just what are the costs of just putting something in there for the summer, for the season? Renee, maybe, or Kevin, look at this, yeah, there's that thing.
I think we're ready?
Motion to adjourn.